I'm going to say welcome to everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is a joint meeting with the Deschutes County Commission and the Benton City Council. The mayor's trying to get online, but we're going to get going here just because I know the day could slip away if we don't get started. So, thank you for joining us. I'm Commissioner Tony DeBoeck. And this is our regular meeting room, but we're meeting in person. I'm real excited. As I say, Councilor Schenkelberg, nice to see you. Nice to meet you. I've always seen each other in passing one time previously. So it's really good to be able to see you. So yeah, we'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order.
I'll call the Benton City Council meeting to order.
And so we do, if you want to go around real quick, let's say hi to everybody.
Hi, Megan Perkins, Benton City Councilor.
Barb Campbell, Benton City Council.
Bill Chang, County Commissioner.
Eric King, Benton City Manager.
Nick LeLac, County.
Hi, everyone. My name's Rita Schenkelberg. My pronouns are she and they, and I'm a Benton City Councilor.
Anthony Brodmann, Bend.
Patty O'Tara, Deschutes County Commissioner. Good afternoon.
Jenna Goodman Campbell, Benton City Councilor and Mayor Protem.
This has a red light.
It's on. Yeah, so there's some red and some green, but you don't need to touch it.
Mayor Sally Russell, Benton City Council. And thank you so much for this opportunity to meet together on this incredibly important community.
We acknowledge Melanie.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Can you all hear me? This is Councilor Keebler from Benton City Councilor.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. We do have other people in the room, staff and other folks and public available on our Zoom call. This will be a discussion between the Board of Commissioners and the City Council and staff helping us with information also. So, yeah, do you want to, were you going to say some other introductory statements or anything?
I think I said it, which is, I'm so happy we're thrilled for our community that we're sitting here in this room, all of us together to work on this just really critical issue in front of our community.
Okay, so pledge of allegiance. We do have a flag available in the corner of the room here, and then we have a land acknowledgement following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to follow with a land acknowledgement. The Benton City Council would like to thank the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs for offering this land acknowledgement for us to read during our meetings. We encourage everyone watching to learn more about the indigenous people whose homelands we occupy and to explore the additional resources and actions in the document that is attached to the Benton City Council agenda. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River, is the original homelands of the Confederate tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated tribe ceded this land in a treaty in 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting and fishing and gathering rights. The Wana Llama, Warm Springs, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It's also important to note, the Klamis Trail ran north through this region to the great Solilo Falls trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So two main topics today, homelessness solutions, governance and partnership projects. So I guess the same topic, two versions of it. Who wants to kick this off? I guess we do have our great agenda today.
Well, I can just really briefly introduce Brittany Manzo. Brittany is on the screen. Brittany has, as you know, has been hired to help us, to help lead the Emergency Homelessness Task Force that the city and county formed a few months ago. And a key product of that task force will be a strategic plan. The key element of that strategic plan is a governance structure to help us ultimately improve services and the delivery of those services to our community members that are experiencing homelessness. So I'm just going to, in sake of time, just turn it over to Brittany to walk you through what is, for those of you that are in person, there's on your desk, you should see a one pager. We've also emailed it to those that are virtual to kind of walk through this document. And Brittany can provide some context and some of the input that went into creating this document. And then I think our intent for this agenda would be to entertain a, to spend most of the time having the council and county board kind of use this as a starting point and just emphasize that this is a starting point suggestion for what a joint office could look like. We really want to hear your thoughts as an elected body, and then both Nick and I will do our best at the end of this item to summarize and talk about some next steps. So I'll turn it over to Brittany.
Great, thanks so much, Eric. So since we last met at your joint meeting in September, the Emergency Homelessness Task Force has had a lot of work underway, particularly focused on a gaps analysis, trying to understand what the unmet needs are of people experiencing homelessness in the region, as well as the unmet needs of the governance structures and unmet needs for system administrators, the folks, the folks doing the behind the scenes work in Deschutes County and the city of Bend, everything from grant writing to helping to site new shelters. What do folks need and what do they need prioritized within our strategic plan? So you'll see task force members listed here, and for folks in the room, you'll see on your sheet in front of you, there are more than 65 groups and organizations supporting people experiencing homelessness across Deschutes County, and just some of them are members of the task force. But throughout this gaps analysis process, we've, we've started to coalesce around a couple of common buckets of unmet needs. First and foremost is additional funding for housing and services, which I don't think is news to anyone here, as well as the need for deeply affordable housing. Along with those two kind of very practical needs, folks have really been speaking to a need for more coordination, more streamlined and streamlined and strategic action, particularly from government partners. And paralleling that, or parallel to that, is also community engagement. How are we engaging with the general public around the issue of homelessness and helping folks understand what strategies are underway to help folks regain housing stability? So we really double clicked on those two topics over the course of our, our last two meetings. In September, we really started to brainstorm the idea of a joint office, building off of the letter from city councillors Brodmann and Perkins, and then building on an opportunity with Rep. Crop's office. Jason Crop reached out to the city to ask how he can be supportive in navigating some of the partnership challenges that cities and counties across the state are facing. I know Eric shared that folks in Eugene and Salem are up against the same challenges where staff are at capacity trying to deliver services or get programs and program models funded and stood up. But when it comes down to strategic planning, coordination, making sure we know who's on first and who's up next at that, that was a real gap in the community. So at Tuesday's Emergency Homelessness Task Force meeting, we started to brainstorm what the core functions of a joint office could be. We asked, as you'll, you'll see on your handout, we asked task force members, what would be most, most helpful from a joint city-county office? And what came up fell into these, these four buckets that, that could hold the core functions or some suggested core functions of a joint office. As you'll see, those are supporting partnerships. Folks were mentioning the HLC, the Homeless Leadership Coalition, really needs more support in staffing its meetings, in helping, helping providers bring information to and from meetings and, and build on that information sharing and actually act on it. Other partnerships that folks mentioned is the need for regional, state, even federal policymakers to understand the scope of need in central Oregon and what types of investments and policy support could be helpful. A third, you know, group of partners that has come up quite a bit is the business sector in central Oregon. There's, I know BDAB has a lot of interest in supporting people experiencing homelessness and getting involved in the community response, but there's not really one point of contact or a place for them to go to strengthen that partnership and to really get in the game to, to help us out. So that was the bucket around supporting partnerships. Developing strategy was another. As, as we've, we've all seen, service providers are at capacity. They don't have another minute to think about what needs to come next. They're doing their absolute best. They're doing absolutely tremendous work. But what we heard loud and clear is that they could use a coordinated city-county strategy. And developing that strategy, continuous quality improvement, when something's not working, who's noticing? Who's on deck to analyze that? Who's up for developing an alternative proposal and, and helping folks understand where resources might be flexible and able to shift? So when you bump up like with a problem, like we need more shelter, but we're struggling to cite it, who is it that can work between the city and county to try to find the land that's needed? And maybe pivot strategy as, as is necessary? Another element of the joint office or a bucket of the core operations that folks have talked about is systems improvement. The HLC does a tremendous job of holding the core functions of the continuum of care. They, they manage the, the budget cycle, the COC competition, the point in time count, HMIS, and coordinated entry. There's no capacity, especially given that that's a volunteer, that's a volunteer board, there's no capacity to truly analyze end to end the homeless service system, where its gaps are, where investments are needed, and where those investments might come from, resource development. So this leading systems improvement is really the strategic planning arm of the joint office as folks are envisioning it on Tuesday. And last is coordinating funding. The city and county both make considerable contributions to the homeless services, to homeless services in central Oregon. But how much more powerful would it be for providers to see that county funding truly complements city funding and vice versa? That when there's gaps in county funding, city funding might be more flexible and able to step in. So that funding coordination role was a big one. So I want to leave time for you all to discuss and dig in here and, and ask questions of the, the task force's feedback, but I just wanted to lay out these buckets, these four major buckets of core functions that we might be able to think about. And before I drop off, I do want to, I do just want to quote the Benton Bulletin that put it, I think, as distinctly as possible, their editorial board last night said, "We need someone to see the gaps and find a way to plug them." When I came into the community and when I, when I started talking to folks, everyone knew what the gaps were, had a general idea. There's just not someone to hold on to that, learn more, plan around it, implement and support folks as, as direction changes or a strategy needs to change. And we heard that asked loud and clear from the task force. So I want to turn it over back to, back over to folks in the room, but I'm here if you have any questions about the task force meeting on Tuesday or what else we found in the gaps analysis.
Thank you very much for that introduction, and we do have the one pager in front of us here. Are there thoughts or comments?
Are there any specific questions of Brittany while we have her right here?
So, well, please Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, well, one thing that, that was, at least indirectly mentioned, but which I want to, you know, say directly and, and emphasize is that we need somebody to figure out, not just where the resources are going to come from that we need right now, but we need to think about resource sustainability. And I, I think that that could be another task of this joint office is to, is to really help us look at, look very creatively at our community and figure out, you know, where the sustainable funding sources to, to offer services and facilities at a, at a scale that we have not achieved yet are going to come from.
I also saw Councilor Keebler, you had your hand up, Councilor Keebler, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, everyone, for being virtual. I'm, we're quarantining. There was an exposure at my child's school, otherwise I would be there. So Brittany, I was wondering if the task force talked at all about, you know, who, who's the entity that would be the main, the main place where this office would be housed? You know, because if we're trying to go countywide, if we're trying to get a little more regional, it makes sense for me that it would be in a, in a regional government or in a county government with the support and coordination of cities, but I didn't know if the task force had talked about that at all. The task force hadn't dug into that specifically, but there was, as you mentioned, a countywide orientation with a focus on Bend, given the resources at the table and the, the political leadership in Bend. But folks hadn't talked about where specifically it would be housed. We did talk about its relationship to the HLC and wanted to be really clear that this would be a separate entity from the continuum of care and more of a partner and a support to the continuum of care, not supplanting it or usurping it or, or anything like that.
I think we have a little time delay going on here.
Okay.
That worked. Thank you.
So one of the thoughts I have is what's, is there a vision statement? You know, a vision statement about homelessness in central Oregon or, or the city of Bend specifically? So this implements something, but what is it, what is it implementing? Is there, is there a way we could have that discussion here and get, get to something? You know, there's, people need housing, people are homeless. We're going to, I don't know, help me finish the sentences here. I don't know, you know, what's the vision?
I mean, I can comment, Commissioner, since a lot of this was generated by a letter that Councilor Perkins and I wrote. I think my vision for this is, and this isn't a vision statement because I'm not a marketing professional, but I will say.
But you know enough that, yeah.
I mean, I will say that I feel like there is a moment in this community that we have right now where we can work together to prevent some of the problems that have gotten us to where we are. I think we all agree that the solutions in other cities and other regions have failed, and that we have an opportunity right now to make sure that we don't make the same mistakes. Part of that, I think, is ensuring that, and I'm not suggesting that anybody at the city or the county has done this in the past, but there is risk of, I believe, governments in the region passing the buck, saying this isn't a city problem, this isn't a county problem. And I don't think that gets us any closer to where we are. But I'm, I'm brand new to this. I've only been in office for less than a year, but every year over the last several years, homelessness has come, has risen 13%. So whatever we're doing, I'm not saying that we've made active mistakes, but now we have an opportunity to stop passing the buck. And we may not agree on the causes of homelessness in this community. I think in this room, we can probably agree on a lot of them. We may not agree on all of the solutions, but I do think we can agree that this requires a partnership. And if, if there's, if that's all we leave today or this process with is a partnership that we're agreeing, that this issue has components of land use, behavioral health, and public health, and law enforcement, and, and our healthcare system, you know, we, we need to give basically a, a signal to the community that we care about this jointly as governments. So my vision statement, if, one that I would propose to the group is just that we simply work together to prevent and end homelessness, because it's not going to be easy. We've seen all of the mistakes that Portland and Seattle and San Francisco and New York City and other cities growing and dealing with this problem have faced, and I think we can do better.
If I could also add, if we're, if the question is, well, what is this, what is this group going to do, or, you know, what are they trying to accomplish or, or implement? The, the, well, the emergent, we have this Emergency Homeless Task Force, which I think is, is actually not, wasn't the best name to assign to this group, because a lot of what the Emergency Homeless Task Force has been doing is sort of like longer term analysis and planning. So the word emergency makes you think like, oh, like they're, they're, they're working on, you know, the managed camp situation or, or, you know, something that's very immediate. But I, I think one of the most valuable things that is going to come out of that Emergency Homeless Task Force is a strategy. And if we're, if we're asking the question, well, what, you know, what will the, what could a joint office apply its focus to? I think we will want to look to that strategy to, because it is going to be, you know, a big picture, long-term, comprehensive look, and is going to, you know, indicate for us some of the, some of the needs and some of the initiatives that we will need to be working on. So I, yeah, I just want to connect the, you know, connect that, this idea of a joint office to the work that the Emergency Homeless Task Force has been doing.
Well, if you look at the numbers at Hundle Road, it was 35 last January. It was 85 Memorial Day weekend, and it's 111 now. That, and I've heard that, that road. And I've heard that that road is going to possibly be moved. And then we, what are we, we just moved Revere. And where are those, truly, where are those people going right now? I know that a few more tents are right out by the stabilization center because that's where I drive in every day. So I'm like going, okay, so we're moving out of a location where everybody sees them, but where are they going? Are they still staying within the city? I mean, I don't know if anyone in the city has an answer to that, but, you know, you just, you know, they're going somewhere. And truly, from what I've read, that it's seven times more dangerous with cold weather than it is with hot weather for death. And we, you know, we really don't know that. And what is the capacity of our warming shelter? I talked to the churches yesterday in Sisters, and because of what they're dealing with, they're actually only able to like commit to two weeks. I mean, and two weeks for a church is a really huge, huge commitment in today's world with COVID and everything. So, you know, I just, I worry, you know, what if we do have that really, you know, what if we have those big snowstorms, 24 inches, November 13th? How are they going to, you know? I don't want people freezing to death. So where are, does anybody know where they're going? Are they just moving somewhere in the city, Eric? Does anybody have any clue?
Well, I think you're highlighting a really important piece, and that's one of the reasons why council established a very specific goal around increasing capacity. We're trying to provide a whole host of options, but as this handout indicates, there's close to 1,000 people in Deschutes County through the.
Oh, it's way more than that, actually. It's probably like at least 1,500 plus when you see the Huddle Road and you see the number all over the county.
And we'll talk about that at the next agenda item about how to increase capacity. We've opened up the Second Street Shelter. We have a hotel that's being renovated right now, the Bend Value Inn.
How many people can go there?
There's 30 units there, 80 units at the Second Street Shelter. We are looking to acquire another shelter right now. We'll talk about some of the other options such as outdoor shelter or safe parking programs in the next agenda item. But this ultimate goal of 500, you know, that's not enough based on the population that we have today. And there are folks in the county outside of the city. So council made a specific goal, and we're a few hundred into it, but our goal over the next two years is to increase capacity. And so we're trying to leverage our ARPA funds as much as we can to build out that capacity, but we'll need to do that in partnership with the county and other entities.
But on that specific question, we don't have any plans to move everyone off of Huddle Road. We are not clearing Huddle like we did with Emerson. We absolutely have the need to plow snow through there. So we're trying to get people, we used the word scoot in an email today versus completely move away. We need people to scoot. We need them to get out of the actual roadway. We're going to try and get some cleanup done. But no, we're not just evicting everyone from Hummel Road. And you're absolutely right. We're not evicting them because we don't have a good location for them to go to. Patty, you're right about that. Yeah.
This is a great discussion. And the reason we're here today is because we keep having these discussions. And the opportunity here today, like to go back to what Brittany said is, we know where a lot of the problems are and to what Council Brodmann said, we know some of the things that have been tried in other communities. We know there's a different way to work together in our community. There's this vision. It sits here sort of on both sides of this. And I think the question is, is that all the different pieces that we're talking about right now is what in this is, are the needs that you're expressing and the actions that we need to take and the partnerships that we need to form, is that incorporated in this proposal? So is, if you look on the backside, if you look at the suggested core functions, you know, and again, as Brittany said, to sort of, we can see the holes that need to be plugged, but we can't see how to get enough resources and how to move forward to get this done. And so what's a structure that we can agree to as two governing bodies? And is this the template that's going to give us the ability to expand our capacity and to create more robust, functional partnerships to not be having these conversations in real time anymore, but to have a strategy, to have the funding, to have the partnerships across this area, you know, and to actually move forward in a different, even different way? I mean, the real time conversations are so important, but I think the, and we're going to move into that some, but the real purpose of us getting together today and the most important thing that we can do is figure out, like, are the conversations like the one we just had, is this going to be the structure that's going to get us there? Can we agree to that?
Well, I do have to bring up that we got hundreds of emails over putting the homeless camp between the two schools and 1,995 kids. I know you had signatures from parents, teachers, coaches, et cetera. I walked the property and it actually was clearly identified as a gas line. So, you know, I care about our kids and I really would hope that the decisions that if we come together, that we would make decisions that really work for the whole community. I know Les Schwab isn't happy with having the break-ins and everything. I know the people, the hotels by Huddle Road aren't happy, the Volvo dealership, they're all, the standard appliance, they're all being impacted. And that's, they're part of our community too. So I just feel like, okay, how can we come together and actually make something successful?
And I think that is, that is part of the idea here is to be able to, you know, coordinate on those decisions. I know we'll be talking about, I think, the idea for managed camps or villages in the next agenda item, so if we can focus that discussion there. But I think a piece of this that I noted in Brittany's presentation but don't necessarily see highlighted here is that piece of community engagement and that back and forth with the community about proposals, you know, like locations for different facilities. I think that's, that could be an important role for this partnership if we pursue it because, you know, you received hundreds, we probably received thousands. And it's, you know, it is confusing for the community, I think. At a lot of times, I'll acknowledge that, to kind of figure out what the process is, how they can engage, where we're at. We own some of that communication, you know, kind of challenges because we're moving quickly. And so I think a coordinated effort like this could really help both for the community to have a reliable source of information that they could go to and know that they're going to find the most up to date kind of, you know, all the information about how they can engage and to engage with this office as well to give their feedback.
I know Councilor Keebler, I think you had a question or a comment.
No, I think, I think I was going to say what you just said and what Jenna just said, so I'll just second that. And I think it would be important for this office to have some, some community communication and engagement role for all the reasons that Jenna just stated. So I will go on.
Well, so back to the beginning of where I was thinking, I mean, are we building for zero homelessness? Are we aiming for zero homelessness? I mean, that's a vision statement, right? And that's some of the big high level statements. You know, there's, we want to walk along with somebody that needs help, and we may be doing it for many years. There's different versions of what's going on out there. You know, housing first model is something that Neighbor Impact provides, but there's not outreach to homelessness and the active case management on the street. Different people are going to be looking for different, well, they may not be looking for help, right? And we want to help people that are losing hope. We want to bring them back into the community and the society. But we also, you know, are we, just like I had mentioned before, are we asking for people not to sleep under the no camping sign? You know, however you want to take that. Where are we asking for people not to set up in the, you know, parking lots or the front or the back of a business? Or, you know, then we get to panhandling, and I'm not trying to push buttons, I'm just pointing out there's, there's these topics out there. This is a idea, we're going to make a joint office and we're going to do good work. That's great. But our job as the city council and the board of commissioners is probably say, what are we expecting from this? What's the vision statement on this?
I think it's exactly at the back of this page, Tony. I think the vision is to support partnerships, lead system improvements, develop strategy, coordinate funding, and help with community conversations. I think that was another excellent addition. I think that is what the vision is. No, and I will say to you, no, the vision is never going to be zero homeless people, Tony. I moved here 30 years ago. There were people camping in the woods. There will always be people who choose that lifestyle and.
Oh, yeah. Well, and I mean, I always think of it as people show up in the summertime, you work at the, you know, whatever, you know, industry you want to do, do what you're doing in the summer, and then maybe if you don't have housing, you don't spend the winter here. So, and I'm just saying that seemed to be the thing we used to do for the last 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, probably. People, it's enjoyable to be here in the summertime and live out in the woods. I worry that people that are settling in for the winter, though, it's not a very healthy situation, just like Commissioner Derr said.
Just two quick things. I think in terms of the vision, the one thing that I think every single person in the city can agree on is that what we have right now is not working. It's not working for anybody on either side of this issue, on any side of this issue. And secondly, when you were sort of talking about how it will affect city council and commission and the jobs that we have to do, I see this, this office making it, making us be better at our jobs because they will be providing guidance, they will be streamlining the work that we are trying to do so that we can be better at our jobs.
Well, and that's fine, but as I say, I was just trying to get back to that vision statement. What's the vision? Because I just think of a taxpayer, a property owner, a homeowner in our community. So the city council and the commission met and you decided to, you know, create an office of, are we asking people not to sleep under the no camping sign? I mean, I go back to that, it's a silly example, but.
No, I don't think it's silly. I think, but I think what we're hearing around here illustrates the exact problem. Not that anybody's at fault, but this illustrates the need that we have right now for leadership. And if we can come together as leaders in this community and prioritize not saying this is a state problem, not saying this is a federal problem, not saying this is a regional economic issue, this is our issue, the people in this room. And this issue requires our leadership. The best thing I can think is that we formally agree together, this is our issue. Because I don't think, I think that this is when the hard work starts. I fully expect we're going to leave here with a concept that we can all agree upon. And then the hard work starts, talking about camping regulation, talking about all of the issues that this joint office is going to be responsible for. I would disagree a little bit with Councilor Campbell. I think the goal should absolutely be preventing, not just ending, preventing and ending homelessness in our community. It's not fair to the housed population, certainly not fair to the very visual elements of homelessness we see, like for instance, out on Huddle Road. It's not fair to the 90% of the other people who aren't on Huddle Road who are experiencing homelessness. Those are just the folks in our community that we see. So I think that we are illustrating these granular issues that this office and us as leaders are going to have to address. But as long as we all agree that this is our problem and that these people are our people, I think that's a really good result.
I agree. And I think that kind of going back originally to what you were saying, Chair Debone, is that. Councilor Schinkelberg, is your mic getting picked up?
I don't know.
You can get closer to it.
Yeah. Can you pull it up?
Hello, everyone.
Oh, there we go.
You might want to hold it closer to. That, like, as elected officials and as leaders in this community, that we understand systems and we understand the barriers around land use, around funding, and around these big systemic issues, that we don't want to put that pressure on service providers. We want service providers to provide service, and they will go through kind of all of these nitty gritty details that like we as elected leaders don't understand. But as elected leaders, we can remove the barriers of land use and all of these other pieces that make it so difficult for our service providers to provide the services, which they are heavily trained to do. And so like my vision for this conversation in this joint office is that we make it as useful as possible for service providers to do their job to then prevent homelessness.
Right.
Thank you. And, you know, I'm looking sort of at the suggested core functions on this page as you are. And I was, I was listening to your question, Chair Debone, and so, and trying to figure out, does this fit? You know, does your question and the need that you, and the, right, the needs that you, does that fit into the structure here? And so I was thinking if, like, together, if we were to create, you know, and identify supporting partnerships and then, which led into system improvements, and together then this group develops strategies, which is what we're mostly talking about today, is strategies, but sort of putting together some of those core foundations that we also need to support the strategies. So like if you see, improve the region's response to homelessness, develop and refine solutions and partnership with service providers, HLC leaders, and also people experiencing homelessness. So I was trying to sort of like listen to you and then put the litmus test on this sort of recipe that's in front of us and say, would that fit? I mean, can you see a relationship between?
Oh, yeah. So as I say, I see another piece of paper here, you know, one that says, you know, the goal is zero functional homelessness, or, you know, something like that. Welcome individuals to the economy if you're able and ready to work, you know, offer services for mental health or addiction, or, you know, however you want of the terminology. But I mean, there's like six bullets right there, and all of a sudden, hey, that's what we're trying to do here. And then it fits into, you know, the.
So specific strategies.
Yeah.
Yeah, that fit under the developing strategy.
Yeah. So I guess that's what I was, you know, kind of envisioning is another possible piece of paper there that, because then we trace our mission right back to that. That's why we're doing this.
And would you agree that this is a starting place for that vision statement, Tony? That, that supporting partnerships, leading systems, that those are a component? What's that?
This would implement any of those statements. I mean, now I'm just thinking out loud here, we're talking back and forth, but this, this is how you would implement a set of vision statements or a set of goals.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think that what you're all talking about are elements of a strategic plan, you know, the vision, mission, the core elements to implement, et cetera. So I think what I'm doing is taking, and I know Nick is as well, we're taking notes and making sure that we can, and I can maybe summarize what I heard from you all. I think what we're looking for is the city manager and county administrator, is there enough momentum between the two bodies for us to dig in and work on some of these details and also sync up with the task force? Because they're, they're developing a lot of these details with the strategic plan over the next couple of months and then come back to you probably in January with a more detailed proposal. And also kind of try to sync this up with some legislative efforts that were mentioned earlier to see if we can potentially get some funding to get this kickstarted. But I don't think we wanted to take that step unless we had this checkpoint with both bodies that you were interested enough in going down this route. Maybe just starting there at a high level. And then I'll, what I'll do is I can feedback what I heard to make sure we've captured it.
Commissioner Derr, I can't tell if you have your hand up or if you're just thinking.
No, I'm thinking.
Could I, could I just, Eric and Brittany and Megan, since you three have been tracking the, and Nick now too, have been tracking the Emergency Homeless Task Force pretty closely. Am I, am I correct that we will get a high level strategy document out of that process? And so if we're talking about what are we trying to implement, that, I'm hopeful that that will be, we will be able to bring that back to both of these bodies and say, oh, yeah, okay. So if we, if we're setting up an implementation body here, you know, here's some of the things we're trying to implement.
Yes, exactly. That's correct.
And that may be very unsatisfying for people who haven't been tracking the process and who don't have a sense of what's going to be in that, in that document yet, but it's coming. Maybe, Brittany, you could tell us a little bit about, about the timeline? And, I mean, if you have, if you, if you want to make some statements about, you know, what is going to be in that, in that document now, that, that could be useful as well.
Sure. So at our final task force meeting at the end of November, we're going to be finalizing the strategies and the commitments that partners inside the task force will be making, the contributions to advancing the strategic plan. We'll be ready for rollout by mid-December. Some of the things that I'm seeing so far are, to Counselor Schinkelberg's point about the structural issues at play, there is a tremendous need for affordable housing in the region. There's a tremendous need for ongoing behavioral health service funding. Everyone in this room, I think, probably knows both of those things already. But what the strategic plan will be laying out is the ways by which the community can achieve those things. Who needs to work together to develop more affordable housing and more deeply affordable housing? What untapped opportunities are there in the behavioral health space coming from state funding? How do we strengthen some of the efforts the HLC has under? How do we strengthen some of the efforts the HLC has underway to, or, or not so much strengthen, but advance the by name list work that they're about to take on? What does that look like when you take it across the entire system? How do you build on that work? So something I would just offer as far as the goal or the vision, a lot of communities have set out saying that they are ending homelessness and that they are going to within ten years. And what's happened is that we have not aligned resources to that goal. So I want to be very pragmatic and honest about what's possible, which will give us the space to invest in what's needed to really, to really get there. The scope of need is tremendous, but I don't think it's outside of the scope of manageable in Central Oregon. So I'm really excited about that, but I want us to be practical so we don't set service providers up for failure or ourselves for that matter. But I do think that a more streamlined approach could offer a lot to the community in inefficiencies when, when it comes to efforts to prevent mental homelessness.
Could I ask another question, Brittany? Is, is it a fair guess that within that document, we're not going to see an opposition to a joint office between the city and the county, I assume? My expectation is that this general systemic approach will be something we'll see in that document, right?
Exactly, yes.
So maybe I can just kind of give you what I heard as feedback to make sure I captured it correctly. I heard vision statements and I heard some ideas for what that vision statement should include from both the Council and Commission in terms of connection to mental health and addiction services, to the, you know, ending and preventing homelessness, to making sure that we're not passing the buck. I heard some ideas, I won't go into those details, but the vision statement needs to be more clearly articulated. That would then be the umbrella that would nest some of these items. I heard specific additions maybe to this sheet that would focus around communication and community engagement. I also heard and maybe another potential core service area being connection to other sectors, like we just talked about workforce housing, mental health or behavioral health and addiction services, et cetera. But there should be some, if this joint office is in place, it needs to have some connection to those other, really other key influencers of this issue. And the idea being that, as Counsel Schenkelberg said, like getting the structure in place so that the service, the nonprofit community can actually focus on doing their work and that we provide kind of that strategic plan, that structure, the institution so that the nonprofit sector does what it does best. Did I, Nick, anything to add to that?
Thanks, Eric. The only thing I would add was Commissioner Chang's suggestion for resource sustainability. And that could very well be within the coordinating funding, but it could also be a separate topic or elaborated on in any of the other four big buckets, or any of these that you've just summarized. But I agree, those matched my notes as well.
And maybe one, one question back to you before we, is are, are we starting with kind of Bend into Chutes County or is there an interest in, I think the other city that we have, as you saw listed on the task force, is Redmond? Any interest in including Redmond at this early stage or do you want to wait for that? I mean, I think it's obviously a question we would need to ask Redmond to, to see if there'd be interest there, but I wanted to see, especially from the county perspective.
And I would just also extend that to Sisters, who's, they've reached out to us recently and we had a great meeting, joint meeting last night with the City of La Pines. So we have, certainly the cities of Sisters and La Pines have directly expressed interest. And City of Redmond staff, we would need to engage them to determine their interest as well.
So do we all agree that we want a joint office on homelessness? Tony De Bone, I'm looking at you.
Well, before I answer that question, I wanted to flip this upside down, too. Remember that we do have a lot of neighborhoods coming online. I think the, the big sewer interceptors are putting the ground here in the east side of Bend. Apartments are being built. I mean, this is a point in time, this may be the most pressure that we're going to feel for a generation here. I'm just trying to think of the big picture because, you know, when neighborhoods start to get built out from the UGB expansion, City Bend, I think, is going to be looking at the next version at some point, you know, the next effort to make sure there's land supply there also. And, you know, the efforts that the City Council has done for, you know, zoning and densifying this Second Street Core District and everything, this may be that one time where it just really gets narrow and tight and hopefully will never even be in this situation again, you know, generationally. The future is bright is my point, is where I was going with that.
We all hope you're right, Tony. Absolutely.
No, I think we are, I mean, it is.
That you are correct. And yeah, I would say nothing would make me happier than not needing the joint office on homelessness in five or 10 years. I would love to be in this room talking about dissolving it because we have achieved the goal of preventing and ending homelessness. But I think at this moment, oh, it's the worst. It is the worst in six years. It's the worst that any of us can imagine while living here. It's, you know, we hope that this is the peak, but we don't know that. And so, you know, at this moment, we need to be coordinating. I believe.
I mean, I was working on homelessness in the 1990s.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm going, okay, it's truly, it is only getting worse. And, you know, I think we have to think really carefully what happened. I talked about it on a Zoom call, that in 2014, the state hospital in Pendleton was closed. It had been open for 101 years. It at one time had too many people in it, it had 500. But truly, there are people on the street that four days in a mental health hospital aren't enough. They need a longer period of time for their treatment. I've spent an hour with Dr. Barry one day, working with a couple who had a family issue. I mean, it's not just the homeless. We truly need more psychiatric mental health housing. According to my chart, I got from our, we only have 151 beds here. You know, some of the beds here are for substance use abusers. I mean, but we have a 16-bed facility that's locked down. And truly, I think the state needs to recognize our side of the mountain and have something added here. They're looking at Wilsonville Junction City, they're putting them elsewhere, but they're not putting anything over here and I feel like we shouldn't be ignored.
You are absolutely right, Patty. The issue of mental illness contributes to this problem of homelessness, not just since 2014, but since the 1980s when, you know, and it was, it was because the facilities were inhumane that they closed them, but without replacing and putting in that system. I think that's exactly what.
In today's world, we need something compassionate that actually helps someone so that we actually know they've been on their meds for 30 days or 60 days and they've changed, you know, they've helped their mental health state and they can actually go back out and, you know, with support and be contributing members.
I think you're exactly right. And I think this joint office could help exactly with that. Tony kind of mentioned the idea of, you know, do we know a good idea of what the problem is? And I can tell you, absolutely, there are service providers who know almost every individual. There's a single gentleman who works with Kovo who can tell you, I mean, I'm serious. I think he could tell you every person who's living at Juniper Ridge. We have so much knowledge in our community. We have so many good people. They, but that coordinated, that coordinated action is what I think we need. And that, and that's the only reason I say that for myself, it wouldn't be a vision zero thing. I think that in order to build and get the trust of the community, they need to know that we understand what the problem is. And we understand that, no, they're not all mentally ill, they're not all addicts, they're not all folks who have fallen on hard times, that this is an incredibly complicated group of people, but that's exactly how we want to approach this. We, and that's what's taking so long, is the solution is complicated. You know, different people have different needs and that's exactly what we're trying to do here, is identify what the needs are, who might be successful on, in the, you know, Ninth Street. If we actually were to put some sort of housing there, you know, it would never just be first come, first served. It is only because I know there are service providers who have that knowledge that could tell us, these are the 10 people that we think could be successful here.
Counselor Campbell?
Mm-hmm.
In the fact that you.
I know, I'm going to turn off my mic now.
We have to be a meeting at 3:00 and we.
It's our fault.
There's a substantial element to our, to our agenda. I also know that Counselor Keebler has been waiting to say something. And so I'd like to hear from here. And then I'm going to ask you as a body, who else?
That's okay, I'll wait.
Nick, and so then I'd like to sort of see if we can once more sort of come to general agreement to move forward in sort of fleshing out this concept. So Counselor Keebler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to kind of comment and confirm that, because I'm very interested in working with our legislative delegation to ask for support from the state for this, for this coordinating effort. I think that's very appropriate. But I know that we're going to need to be aligned as leaders and to show from both our bodies the support for this concept in order to even make that ask. So I wanted to put that out there and I think we're sort of heading in a direction of the mayor of like, let's get to a decision point here. If this is something that I think we can all agree on and support, that's great because there's, we can, you know, Nick and Eric can summarize and start working together. And then we can also work with our legislative delegation for the upcoming session to see what it is they might be able to help us with as well.
So, so now we, let's talk money a little bit here then.
I think we want to have Nick.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Nick, yeah, please provide.
Well, thank you. And both of you have just captured exactly what I was going to say, is that what we would like to do is to, to explore and flesh out the concept, not the final product for a joint housing office, but just continue to explore the concept. And that is going to be so critically integrated with the Emergency Homeless Task Force Long Term Strategy and the legislative concept. All of these pieces are connected. And if you're supportive of our exploring these concepts and considering how our other three cities might be involved, we would then bring that back to you in January. But the next topic talks about, so what do we do between now and then? Because we have issues we need to address right now with warming shelters, et cetera. So I think that's where we're, we're hoping to get the direction from you before, before we leave today.
That's great.
So I was trying to understand, you know, what would be the scope of dollars? You know, so state budget is made up of payroll, that's how the state money is created. Local dollars are from tax, property taxes. Federal government is the, the annual federal budget. So then, you know, let's ask somebody for money. Okay, well, how much money are we asking for? What are we kind of thinking here? As I say, I talked to a commissioner in Multnomah County just recently. They mentioned that $35 million from the county, $35 million from the city, $70 million budget. Population of about 800,000 is $43 per person that lives there, or, it's double that. So I was 35 divided by 800,000, so it's 90 almost. Which is just, you know, put it in scope. And then are we talking about long term? You know, let's put in X amount this year, we're going to do it next year, we're going to do it 10, five and 10 years from now or not? So just vision kind of thoughts.
Just want to say quick on, on budget, my hope is that between, you know, our staffs working together and the Emergency Task Force and this joint body, they're going to be able to describe very specifically what the funding needs are and they will be coming back to us with, is this, is this a funding mechanism that you agree with? We've passed a construction excise tax. There's a lot of tools at our disposal. I also just want to remind ourselves, if money, lots of money solved this problem, Portland wouldn't have the explosion of homelessness that they have. San Francisco, so it's not just money, it's doing it effectively. And so while I'm keenly aware of the financial restrictions we all have, this is the fiscal, this is the fiscally responsible approach, combining pooling resources and having a cohesive strategy to not be spending millions of dollars on solutions that don't work. So I, I am comfortable, I would love if we could leave here just with unanimity on a joint concept. And then, like I said, that's when the hard work starts. I think that's when we're going to have to start talking about, we have different expectations on funding, we have different expectations on strategies. But as long as we all agree that this is a joint office and a joint issue and we have joint constituents, I think, I think that's the best we can leave here today. I'm not trying to cut off conversation. But if we start saying like percentage responsibility before we've even had the conversation with other cities, before we've had the next conversation we need to have with our legislative delegation, I'm afraid we're putting the cart ahead of the horse.
Well, my vision by mentioning those dollars is, so that was a scope, you know, 90, almost $90 per person that lives in, you know, the most populous county in the state of Oregon. And there's a lot of activity and impact on the streets in Portland. So I'm just pointing out that, yeah, no matter how much money we spend, we could still have not a whole lot. I mean, we're saving specific people, but, you know, it could be still very impactful to the community. So as I say, I'm not an expert in this, I'm just throwing out ideas, trying to get the conversation going.
I guess my comment would be the structure, I think if anything we have learned from any community that we're paying attention to right now, the most important thing is coordination and structure. You don't have that down, it doesn't matter how little or how much money you have. And I think until we really understand that and know that, then I don't think it's fair to create expectations for ourself or our service providers or our other partners. So I think the next steps are really critical, but if we don't have, take those next steps, then we're never going to know or be precise or specific enough to really make the dent and the, and the progress and the impact that I think we can all visualize that we'd like to see today. That's kind of how I see it. That make sense?
Commissioner Chang, any thoughts or Commissioner Derr? So I mean, Barb asked me specifically, what was the question? I mean, ready for the joint office right now, looking at me. So I mean, I'm kind of working through that right now is what I'm doing.
So do we agree that Nick and Eric are going to move forward and come back to us in January with specific ideas?
Well, I was going to ask some commissioners.
I'd like to return to some of your previous comments and some of Commissioners of Derr's previous comments and just say, building more and building more affordable housing is part of what's going to get us, is part of what's going to help us put a dent in homelessness. Getting more behavioral health beds is part of what's going to help us put a dent in homelessness. And we need the right structures to work at the problem. And we have a whole lot of amazing people and organizations in our community who are every day putting a dent in the problem. The issue is just that the, the challenge, that the problem itself is growing bigger, faster than we can, they can put a dent in it. So they need, they need reinforcements. We need to, we need to up our game, we need to increase our capacity, we need to increase, we need to get real smart about how we are applying resources to these issues. And I see this joint office as an opportunity to do that.
So to really be specific, could I turn back to Nick and Eric once more and say, what is a proposal that you might be bringing back to us if, if we all agreed to move forward today?
We would bring back a concept that would be a joint housing office with the core functions that we proposed or suggested today on the sheet, those that Eric previously summarized with a vision statement. And we would bring back what that might look like, including funding, which could be, which would then tie into hopefully Representative Cropp's legislative proposal for a pilot project with potentially some state funding. So we would provide some options to you and what this could look like.
So can we all agree to at least move forward to that next?
So, so I, I mean, I'm just trying to get engaged and make sure we're on the same page here. We have 65 nonprofits. Bethlehem does a great job. Shepherd's House is a faith-based mission in our community, bringing anybody in low barrier. We've got a lot of great nonprofits in our community. So now 65 nonprofits, we're going to start a government office of the efforts. It almost seems like a disconnect. Maybe we should just be offering more authority and more resources to some nonprofits possibly. And I'm just trying to, you know, kind of get grounded on.
I think, I think, I think that of course we want to empower our service providers more and I hope that when we as elected leaders work on those systemic barriers, then they will feel empowered and hopefully have more energy to overcome some of the burnout that they're experiencing. they're experiencing. But when they are spending their time instead of providing services, jumping through the hoops that are, all of the government is based on, then they, then they don't get to. And then they get burnt out doing those things instead of what they're, what, why they got into the work in the first place. And so I don't think that we are disempowering them unless someone on the Emergency Task Force would like to correct me, Brittany. I think that what we're doing is we're making it more useful for them so that they can support the individuals experiencing homelessness right now. I think as city council, what we're asking the county to do is that you all have public health and behavioral health under your umbrella and we don't. And so we don't have a lot of the funding and the providers and the experience to provide so many of the things that the individuals experiencing homelessness need. Like we can talk about infrastructure, we can talk about roads, we can talk about building all of these things, we can even talk about housing. But as Brittany said, it's like affordable housing and behavioral health. But we can work on affordable housing, but then we need the county to come along with us to help us with behavioral health. And then so on and so on and so on. It's not that simple, but it's also like, those are the two, some of the two things that Brittany highlighted. And I think that's kind of, that's, I mean, that's how I see it.
And I was, just to speak to your point, at the Emergency Homeless Task Force meeting Tuesday, it seems like it was just hours ago, Tuesday, I mean, this question was asked to, you know, a huge panel of service providers directly. And, and they, they welcomed this concept. And, and they welcomed it specifically after, after we clarified for them, you know, we're not trying to create some government body to tell you what to do. We are, we are trying to, we're trying to create a structure that can give you the, the leverage that you need, that you don't currently have to, to, to do what you do well. And those are things like working out land use issues for them, trying to identify long-term sustainable funding for them, you know, getting them all together to look across the continuum so we can see where the gaps are. And then, and then say, you guys are doing a great job with this and this and this. We see this gap here, does anybody want to do that? And if nobody steps up, then trying to find someone else to do that. So those are, those, those were some of the, the ideas that, you know, we explored with, with service providers at the last Emergency Homeless Task Force meeting. And they, they were, they were enthusiastically supportive of that. Megan, do you?
Yeah, I mean, and the phrase, you know, help, help us increase capacity, help us, you know, every, every single person that we talked to at that task force is, is maxed out at this point. And we may have 65 different service providers in this community, but not a, hardly a single one of them can do one more thing at this point. And they also see the role of this, of this potential office as being something that could be almost like a, a training ground or just something that just can help more, more service provider, more service provision happen in our community.
Well, so I mean, I'm, we've gotta get more information, let's move forward. I, I mean, I don't want to be stopping anything today. If the question is, we're gonna start the Office of Homelessness without knowing the, the, the strategic plan and the long-term budget, I mean, I can't answer that. But we've gotta take it farther. I mean, this is a great conversation, let's go figure out what it's gonna look like. Ms. Mayor, you said, you know, put the kind of structure together for the curtain rod and the curtains or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I was like looking in the closet, I was like, what am I gonna hang there? Well, first I've gotta like have the hangers and I've gotta have the curtain rod and then I gotta figure out like everything I need to put in there, so it's really gonna work. I mean, it's not, a good analogy, but yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, we gotta start somewhere and put the structure in place to be able to, you know, get the rest of it moving forward. So thank you, Chair.
Oh, for sure. And, you know, I mean, the county behavioral health, behavioral health is mental health and addictions. We already, we have the professionals, we are here for population health, everybody in the county. So we already are, I mean, just a major player officially as the public health authority down that path, right? And then, then it's land use and cost of housing and is the economy rocking or not? What's the weather at any point in time? So there's all the variables at the same time. But yeah, let's definitely take the ball and run with it.
So we all agree that we support staff moving ahead with forming the concept? We support the concept in general, is that fair to say?
Commissioner Adair, and I'm just gonna do before, I'm gonna ask you to speak a second, but I'm also gonna do a time check because to get you and Counselor Campbell, you've gotta be running up those stairs at 5:00 too, which gives us 15 minutes. So I can see that our conversation on ARPA funds is gonna be early abridged, but I think this is more important, so we'll make that. So any, any other wrap-up comments before we move on to ARPA funds?
I was sitting in a meeting in February of 2020 and JW Terry went to the front, it was a homeless leadership, and he said, there are 65 people in this room and this is way too many to get anything done. And look at us now, gosh, what are we? You know, another year and a half from there and our problem has only gotten worse. So, you know, truly we need to do something. I would have, I want to see the numbers. What is it gonna cost the county to have this office? You know, we've got Colleen, we've got her right-hand person, you know, Sisters is asking us to hire somebody else to help with their homeless. I, I actually want to see something done, does that make sense? I want to know that we've got a warming shelter happening because it's gonna get cold, who knows when, but soon. So, you know, this Emergency Task Force, really truly, I thought it was an emergency and I was surprised you guys only met once a month. Because it is an emergency and our numbers, Measure 110 has brought in so many people to this, to our locale. Yeah, it's really brought in a lot of people if you go and ask them why they're here. So we've really got to be, we've got to step up our game. Thank you.
So one of the visions is a low-barrier managed campground. And I'm talking about campground with RV vehicles, possible tents. And we, we need to be able to spread our wings and find some locations for that. And it's not gonna be, well, so I, I don't, I don't want to speak for the city land use, but it's a shame when we're trying to fit them in in small little corners where we could just put them somewhere and that's state land use. So that was my point, is let's find a good place where we can spread our wings a little bit, because we have dispersed camping happening on city land, county land, federal land, all over the place. Let's figure out what a, you know, low-barrier campground opportunity is. Will help you, you know, with a tow truck to move something there if that's your life belongings right now, but let's figure out some of that.
That's actually a good signal.
That is a good signal. Yeah, so it's just a vision, you know, it's one of those other statements.
All right, so 2:42. I'm gonna send you up the stairs at sort of 2:55.
Two minutes.
Here we go.
That's all I need.
There you go. So in terms of framing the next topic, I'm gonna ask Carolyn to come up and just frame it a little bit for us. We've had some of this conversation with council on the use of ARPA funds to address, I think, what Commissioner Adair mentioned of what are, there's some immediate needs right now and let's make sure that we pair up these resources with those needs. And we've talked about this in general at a high level of partnership, the 1.5 million for outdoor shelter. And at our last meeting, we said, you know, these are the things that we have in the works. But what we are seeing is this need to be a little more flexible with what that might look like and immediate, to address, you know, some immediate needs. And so Carolyn can kind of take that, the next step and talk about some things that are in the work, in the works. And then ultimately, I think what we're looking for is just a nod ahead of, yes, keep going, this sounds like the right direction in terms of flexibility needed to increase capacity and respond to the crisis in the moment. So I think this will get us maybe to what some of the earlier conversation that we had.
When I'm, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Carolyn Egan with the City of Bend. When I'm preparing people for presentations, I always say you have to be prepared to do your presentation in four minutes, even if you thought you were gonna have 20. So here's my chance to prove that I know how to do my own advice. But we have three things that are underway. The first is you're all familiar with the Navigation Center. So through House Bill 2004, the city received directly $2.5 million from DAS to run a Navigation Center. People keep thinking of a Navigation Center like a recreation center, but a Navigation Center is a shelter, emergency shelter, a low-barrier shelter with services. And so we originally thought that we would be able to locate that maybe alongside the Second Street Shelter that Shepherd's House is running. But as you all know, we have an exceedingly high demand even off, not in the winter, for that shelter. So we are looking at another shelter location. So as the City of Bend, we are saying, we want to take some of our ARPA funds, some of the funds that were allocated us to open the Navigation Center and find another location. We would like to do that as a hotel. We think that is the, kind of the most humane way to, to get people into housing. Those rooms are ready and we're seeing some success with Turnkey. I think our request is that we probably cannot do that alone. And to Commissioner Adair's point about needing more winter warming shelter locations, and we are turning over every rock. Any lease that comes up in the City of Bend, we're looking to see what we can do for that shelter. So we are asking for some partnership and some financial contribution from the County Commission to make that additional shelter in the City of Bend possible in the very, very near term. The other one that you're familiar with, we've talked about the outdoor shelter locations, we're really moving to the safe parking and more of the Veterans Village model to really provide the type of service that our neighbors are asking us to provide to those who are experiencing homelessness. And then finally, exactly to Commissioner, to Chair Devone's request, we've been looking at Juniper Ridge. And we don't necessarily have a location identified at Juniper Ridge yet, but we had a subcommittee meeting of council and we would like to provide some land. We now have the authority, clear authority, under House Bill 2006 to do that. We could house potentially on that site those who have been moved from other locations throughout the City of Bend, who perhaps are on Hunnell Road. So as Commissioner Adair alluded to, that's a growing number at Hunnell Road. And maybe even some of the families that are camping dispersed in Juniper Ridge might want a safer place to do that. We are in a position where we can offer the facility and, and the facilities, so garbage, mail service, portable toilets and hand washing centers. What we're looking for from the county is help finding an operator. So would the county be willing to hold the contract for an operator for that site? As we look to identify operators for our other locations, also trying to find an operator for a site at Juniper Ridge, maybe a little bit beyond our staff capacity. And so those are our three updates and I guess our three requests.
And you made it, four minutes.
Well done.
And I'll just add, since I don't think Carolyn had enough time to, to talk about it, that at the last council meeting, I asked staff to bring us back several locations, as many as, you know, potential locations, as many as they can, can kind of find that are potential publicly-owned property and, and private, if that is an option, for a location of, you know, anything on the spectrum of, of temporary to permanent housing from, you know, managed camp to village. But basically to, to bring us more potential sites beyond just the Ninth Street site so that we can kind of have the whole menu of, of site options and then move forward with a request for proposals. So that's where, where that stands.
So I mean, are those specific requests for today then? So let's get down to money then, or yeah, break them down for us then.
So these are, we don't have exact numbers, but the first one for securing another hotel for a shelter. So the question came up before, so Bend Value Inn looks, there's 28 rooms at Bend Value Inn. We think we might have 40 beds there, depending on household size and those types of things. There are two hotels, probably more than two hotels in the City of Bend that could offer up to 60 rooms, so maybe 75 more beds. And that we would like to be able to begin operating, begin negotiating for purchase. Those, we are talking, you know, five and six million dollars to, to acquire those sites. I think what we're starting with is half and half, and I'm gonna stop talking because I'm probably outside.
So who's gonna operate, who's gonna operate those?
Pardon?
Who's the operator of that?
So we have, we have not identified an operator, but I would be lying if I haven't had, said I haven't had several conversations about how we might bring that on with our, the current nonprofits that we have in town. So I'm not, I'm not gonna exonerate anybody yet because they haven't committed.
This is so ripe for, how can we just augment a privately-owned property and pay him the right amount to be able to operate? I mean, think about-
Totally, it's a completely different service. I mean, I think your staff would tell you that some of the experience they've had operating Bend, but with the two COVID isolation hotels, not having professional service that knows how to operate a shelter on-site is creating some friction in the system. So we need-
But I'm referring to, I mean, if, if a property could be privately-owned, somebody has, somebody has enough revenue to keep the doors open and then professional services like the behavioral health people show up to do case management.
Well, we could, so I think the other opportunity we have is not to purchase the hotel, but we could lease it.
In that scenario, would the current hotel owner or operator continue to basically run a?
There's, I think it could take a lot of different forms.
Yeah, I mean, because then it's still in the tax base, it's somebody's private asset and equity can be, you know, held on to or created. And the money can flow, I mean, if we're gonna provide that service.
Chair Devone, if you're willing to put forward a 12 or 24-month lease and bring half the money to the table, I believe we could absolutely-
Now I'm negotiating with you directly.
Well, we have, we are in the process of securing somebody, a real estate professional, that's all they do is hotels, to help us really understand that business model and make good offers, whether they be lease or purchase. We're keeping our open-
Yeah, yeah. Well, as I say, you know, is that, so now we don't have, quite have a landed strategic plan, we're not sure how much we're gonna spend, and this is that short-term effort.
This is very short, this is this winter, as Commissioner Adair continues to allude to. If we can get more people housed safely for the winter and then continue to explore options beyond that.
So this is the solution to save people's lives this winter?
Well, and I would, you know, I mean, let's work this through. I would think that empowering a facility like that right now, a shorter path is gonna be to have the right amount of dollars to be able to, you know, lease it or whatever we need to do for that purpose. So I don't know what that number is. But I mean, if we could not buy something, that'd probably be better for the market itself. Unless, except for that one owner who might make a payday.
I think it also makes it quicker to actually house people, Tony.
Yeah.
The one that we purchased, we're having to do repair upgrades, ADA upgrades, which I think is because it's now owned by the government and it's gotta be accessible. But if we were to lease it, we could actually just put people in as though it were a hotel, Tony. So that's exactly, I think, you know, Carolyn, absolutely, we have told Carolyn, everything, every hotel, please explore. But as far as I'm concerned, yeah, the top of that list are, is a hotel that we could lease. Can I just have one other question? Back to, you were asking about the hotel we already have that has 30 rooms.
Right.
I continue to think that the Bethlehem Inn started with an old hotel and they have four people per room, four strangers. So, you know, I continue to look at those rooms as more than just a single individual per room. As Rita said, we're trying to save lives this winter. If four strangers have to be in the same hotel room in order to get out of-
And it's warm, yeah.
Exactly, right, then-
I mean, can't you do like bunk beds or something?
That's exactly what I'm saying. So when I hear 30, I don't think 30 individuals, Patty.
And that makes it actually like-
I do think that part of it is we're, we're living in COVID now and so the idea-
Of course.
-is like beyond COVID.
Right.
So part of it is-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, COVID.
Forget about that.
And it also may be families, you know, when, when-
Before Commissioner Adair steps out, I, you know, you're supportive of doing something-
Yeah, I would love to see some numbers if you can throw some numbers, you know.
I mean, so yeah, generally, yes, let's get some, yeah.
And then Juniper Ridge.
Well, so then operator, that's the classic thing. So we have 65 nonprofits, anybody of them could be an operator, think it's been off an effort or whatever might work there. But it's the overhead of even getting to that operator is what we're talking about right now, correct?
So that 750 that you've committed to managed camps, would you be willing, don't give it to us, hold on to it and use that to identify an operator for Juniper Ridge?
Well, I, yeah, I'd like to take that a little farther and that's, yeah, let's figure out what that looks like.
I do have the cost for Juniper Ridge if we need to convert the zoning. I don't know if this was sent on to you or not, it's a September email.
And that's the stuff that's, we, we are talking inside this UGB on Juniper Ridge. If we can identify a site, will you hire an operator?
Well, so I'd, I'd like to research that, but I will, I will take that and let's take it a little farther. You know, so I don't know that the county's gonna hire an operator, authorize an operator, you know, so just terminology is why I'm not gonna-
You mean further financially?
Uh, we're talking about Juniper Ridge Possible Camp something now.
Are you willing to take it beyond the 750 or are we talking about?
Oh, no.
Carolyn was just asking, within those, within those, reallocating some of those 750 towards a, towards management of Juniper Ridge.
Okay. I, I just recall that was a request for 1.5, you said 750.
But think about- But think about, 750. Well, yeah, no, and I mean, think about what a commitment that is for the Deschutes County Board. As I say, I'm one, you seem to be the focus point here. But the Deschutes County Board to say, we'll work with the city that's providing land to come up with an operator. So, then, Deschutes County doesn't implement campground as fast as we want and we just took a lot of liability and community, you know, negative feedback possibly if it doesn't go well. So, I'm just pointing out that that's a huge ask that you just asked me.
The gravity of what I'm asking is in line with the gravity of the situation.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, let's acknowledge the gravity of that situation is what I'm asking.
Because it's why we're here this afternoon.
Yeah.
We all acknowledge that. And there's that pressure, short-term, long-term, right? We're in this collision place and we're trying to sort of sort out the long-term as we keep moving forward in the short-term, like winter is now. So, that's the dilemma that we're all facing. And so, there's an opportunity, there's an opportunity and partnership to really make it possible. We need the partnership, right? I mean, the community needs a partnership and so, you know, there's, how do we make this? How does a community, you know, how does this happen for the community in a different form?
I think part of why we are, I mean, a big part of why we're here and why we are, we so need to work together is because we are coming to you as the Public Health and Behavioral Health Authority for the city. So, when we, I mean, obviously, I know you want to solve all these problems as much as we do. But this is, I mean, I think Carolyn's request is formally and consistent with our view of you as the behavioral and public health authority for the jurisdiction.
And it is, it is a big ask. And that, that may be daunting, but I, you know, the other way to look at that is this is a tremendous opportunity for the county to step up and do something meaningful in this, in this universe of, you know, massive challenge that we're facing. I mean, Commissioner Dare just multiple times expressed dissatisfaction with the pace of progress on, on, you know, on homeless initiatives and serving the homeless and putting a dent in the problem. And if we can express great dissatisfaction with the pace of work to date, I think it's also our duty to ask what we can do to change that pace and to do more and better and faster.
So, I know it's going to be a trigger item, but I just need to be able to bring up the fact that, remember, we do have a public safety system. We're not, we don't need to treat anybody like they're breaking a law other than when they are breaking a law or, you know, just public impact. So, we've got to, we have a lot of resources. Sheriff's Office and the Police Department, I mean, we all spend a lot of money for that and we should acknowledge that. We should celebrate the fact that if we have a good culture, we're providing a great service and there's pride in this community, we shouldn't be blacking out or not asking to come to the table some of the public safety efforts that we have in the community too.
Well, as I look at this joint office suggestions and we look at partners and how to basically really work with and leverage all the partners in our community, they're absolutely one of them. I mean, but it's, it's up to us as the policy, you and I talked a little bit about this, but I mean, I really do see as policymakers, and you especially as leaders at the county have the ability to pull, you know, resources throughout the county and then working together with the cities in the county. And so, that's sort of part of the underlying, you know, foundation to this.
Counselor Keebler, Heather.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Keebler. This is slower than.
That's okay, I know I'm behind you. So, yeah, Commissioner DeBonne and I both sit on the local public safety coordinating committee and get to hear from our law enforcement partners often. And just speaking for City of Bend, of course, with our own police department, you know, they don't want to be spending resources arresting people who are homeless for being homeless, right? Like, that's, that's not an efficient use of our, of our law enforcement resources and it's why we've already taken some strides. And the county has, you know, partnered with us because you are the behavioral health service provider on having different, you know, different responses to people who are in distress that don't necessarily need to be a law enforcement response. So, I, I understand why you bring it up, but I just want to caution against trying to think that we can put this on law enforcement's shoulders because to me, this joint office really represents the recognition that there needs to be a structural, you know, coordinating and more regionally focused office that can support our service providers and coordinate our strategy and help prevent the even, ever the need for law enforcement to be involved. And so, I think that is part of the long-term strategy and just wanted to point that out.
And that law enforcement's job is not solving homelessness. Like, they don't, that's not, that is not why they, that's not what their training is in. That's not what any of their background is in. All of the work that they do in the academies is not around that. And they don't have the depth of knowledge of our service providers who have master's degrees in counseling and have been doing street outreach for decades of their lives.
Well, and, you know, just fill in the concept here. So, it's just a vision. If we're, if we are working to build for zero and somebody's, you know, setting up for the night under a bridge somewhere or whatever, you know, some scenario, that's, you know, maybe it's not a cry for help, but that's somebody that's possibly unhoused or something bad's happening. So, I'm just saying, that's a great opportunity. We have a public safety officer that's just going to be like, oh, well, what can we help you with? So, that's my vision here. I mean, it's not trying to go the other way on this.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think with our community services, service officers, you definitely see that with City of Bend Police, that, you know, they are building relationships with folks experiencing homelessness. But to return to the question of kind of this cooperation on a managed camp or whatever we want to call it, as well as I think it's important to note, a part of this vision is the centralization of, of services for people, especially for people living in Juniper Ridge. You know, the, the road situation isn't great out there with winter coming. And so, the idea is to also provide a place where, where service providers and Mosaic Medical, for example, can come in more easily to serve the people who are living there and make sure that the people are receiving access to those services like on a regular basis and can, can get there easily in the winter. But I think one of, you know, the main reason that I see it as so important to have the county's partnership on this is because I don't know that the city can be successful on our own because of your, of the county's expertise in, in public health and behavioral health. You know, I think that the county staff is much better equipped to, to manage this kind of, you know, of service provider contract than the city. You know, I think we would certainly try to be successful on our own if the county declines, but I think we're much more likely to be, to be successful and to have it be a place where we can at least, you know, prevent, hopefully prevent deaths from occurring, but also just prevent service providers from having to, you know, to drive around in the snow out there in, in order to provide services, be able to reach everybody, so.
Great.
And I guess I'll just add that the city, you know, in volunteering to provide the land, I think is, you know, we are, we are definitely putting ourselves out there, I would say, as a, as a city, as a council, to, to provide the land and to agree to kind of really make this facility happen. I think it's a, it's a big, I wouldn't say risk, but it's a, it's a big step for us.
It was just a dollar. This looks like Nick's got something to say.
I think for me, what I'm hearing is the city's asking if we'll be flexible with the ARPA dollars that we had previously committed for the managed camp. That's what's in our matrix. And that's kind of piece number one, are we flexible in how we use those? The second question, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not clear on, are we being asked to be, to hold the contract as the operator for an entire managed camp or for the services that are provided at the camp? To me, that part, I'm, I'm just not clear on what the scope of the, of the ask is. Carolyn can maybe address that.
Take five spots.
Share this or do you want to?
You want to take?
Well, I guess I can, I can talk a little bit about it too, Carolyn, unless something has changed since. But I think the, the idea that we had was to, yeah, to centralize the, the service provision aspect, correct? So that it would be the county's managing the contract for the service providers who would be, as we had done in last, last year, I think it was, where we had service providers all kind of come into a central location near, near Juniper Ridge. That similar concept, but within, you know, within the property itself, yeah.
So, to your question, and as Counselor Goodman Campbell said, it's to operate. So, we would, we'll have all the contracts. Our proposal is that we'll have all the contracts around cleaning out the porta potties and snow removal if we need to and all those types of facility to make the land, we put a fence if we need to, those types of things. But the thing of it is a master scheduler. So, the, the contract to schedule which service providers will be there when, the, making sure that the, the rules and regulations of those who are staying on the site are known. It could be something where those who, who choose to either come for services or choose to put their, their tent and their belongings there overnight, they may take a, a shift cleaning porta potties or being the person who stays up all night as the, as the 24-hour call. So, it is really that camp, that outdoor shelter operator role, that master scheduler that we're looking for. And that's what we're looking for, the county to hold the contract for that operator.
So, who's going to put like the, kind of the, the rules and expectations together? As in, is that a partnership and, you know, if, who's going to publish the rules of, of living there? Because if somebody does it and somebody doesn't like it, who's going to have the authority to say, you didn't do it right?
And that, well, typically what happens is the operator is the one who says, you know, as a, as a group of humans who are going to live together, these are the rules we're all going to agree to abide by. I keep equating it to your freshman dorm in college. So, these are, you know, these are quiet hours, these are when you come and go. I went to Catholic college, so boys weren't allowed after 10. So, those types of rules. And then the, the community members who were there, the guests who are staying at the camp either agree to those.
Yeah, so, but as I say, so if Deschutes County says, okay, we're going to partner with this whoever to implement the operator agreement and the operator starts doing something and then the, the two or three city councils are like, I don't like the way that's happening. I'm just saying, that's, that's a scenario we need to probably have worked out a little bit. And it'll be very public probably if it is.
What if we promise?
Those sign ways. Well, I mean, that's, that's all I'm thinking through is, you know, if it's not done the right way, then you didn't do it right. You have, you know, becomes another layer of frustration for everybody.
Well, my hope is, is that if Deschutes County Behavioral Health is in charge of it, then even though I'm a behavioral health provider as, like as my job, that wouldn't be my job as a city councillor to impose what a behavioral health provider who is the master scheduler, that would be there, they would coordinate that, coordinate that.
Okay, well, as I say, maybe we need to get more clear here and I'm glad Nick brought this up. So, I'm envisioning a nonprofit that's, that implements the, you know, that implements just the whole thing. And they have the authority to do whatever needs to be done to make things happen. Behavioral health is a service provider that will show up during business hours or on call during bad situations, just like they do anywhere in the county. So, yeah, I mean, let's get clear, if we need to get more clear on what we're talking here.
And Mayor, Counselor Keebler has her.
Yeah, Counselor Keebler.
So, this is getting interesting.
Yeah. I was kind of looking for the right moment, thank you.
Yeah, just to, to jump off what we're talking about with county as the behavioral health provider, I was wondering if we could get an update from the commissioners on the status of using ARPA funds to just invest in behavioral health in general? And maybe with some more staffing, especially to support things like camps or the navigation center? Because, you know, we've heard today about that additional capacity. I think, Tony, you even said there's not enough, you know, case management happening. So, I'm just curious if the county is anticipating applying some of those ARPA funds to just investing in your own, own system, which I think would have benefits for the county and the cities within it.
Well, I would say that if you take a look at our outstanding ARPA request list, there are multiple items connected with some specific, you know, specific projects. You know, for example, there was, there was a specific line item that said, or a specific ARPA request that said, you know, to make the Cleveland Commons Permanent Supportive Housing Project work, we, you know, we don't just need capital dollars, we need this to hold up our end of the, the behavioral health services bargain, which, you know, that's actually literally for permanent supportive housing projects to, to qualify for state funding through OHTCS. It's a requirement that, that, so, there, that's just one example. There were, there were multiple kind of line items that are at, to the, as far as I know, all outstanding at the moment. We have not, we have not made decisions on those. I would also add to that, that we just heard, you know, last week from the, the City of Sisters that they would like us to make a commitment of ARPA funds to, I would call it a, like a homeless navigator, but they, they basically were talking about someone who, who could engage in a much more meaningful way directly with the population of, of people who are experiencing homelessness, you know, around the fringes of the City of Sisters, you know, understand those people, understand their needs, help connect them to resources and then, you know, and then articulate up to us, you know, what we should, what more we should be doing at, you know, at their council and at the Board of Commissioners to, to address, you know, homeless, you know, whatever, whatever gaps in services or facilities are, exist in the, in the Sisters area. So, that's all just to say, there, like a, a number of requests have been made. We have not, in, in my opinion, we have not actually made decisions upon those yet. And the fact that we are getting, you know, we heard it from the City of Sisters and we're, I think we're hearing it from the Bend City Council today, it increases the urgency that we make some decisions about those items.
We've got about 25 or 27 positions open in behavioral, or public health, the Health Department, behavioral health and public are the two sides of it. So, probably the best thing we can do, it isn't a function of dollars, it's a function of getting staff for those open positions today, it really is. We've got the Stabilization Center with a few open positions and we've got behavioral health staff positions open in that whole branch. So, as I say, it's fun to think about adding resources, but we can't even get enough people hired right now.
I mean, that, that's true, but I do think that there's certain kind of, our behavioral health division does a lot of things and there are certain branches of behavioral health that I think would be more and less attractive to various pools of workforce for various reasons. I mean, you know, one of the challenges with the Crisis Stabilization Center is, is it's really hard to recruit for a night shift work or weekend work. But there is, there is so much interest and attention to, you know, to homelessness in our community that I can't help but think that if there was another position or two more positions or three more positions created with, with that team, with Colleen and Katie, that I bet there are people in the, you know, among our service providers, I bet there are people who would be interested in stepping up.
Good, Chair DeBonne, where should we go next?
Yeah, do we have anything else specifically for the meeting? I guess Eric and Nick, do you have clarity on, we just went around and discussed it on that. So, it sounds like an operator, I mean, so as I say, I'm, I'm sitting here as one commissioner. We received a quest, request from the City of Bend saying, how about you guys operate? Where are we going to point to this thing on the ground here? That's a big unknown, that's a big commitment. But I mean, I'm really to take it down the, down the way a little bit. Let's see where we can go with it. But we may have to talk pretty quick about this is why it isn't going to fall into place as fast as we want to or whatever, so let's, let's communicate for sure.
Well, I wonder if we might be able to share whatever, you know, draft scope of work that we come up with? Because we will also be putting out a request for proposals for operators of an additional site potentially. And so, I think that that could be, you know, a resource for the county, of course, to take it and create what you need to make out of it, but to say, kind of, here's what we have in mind. I mean, I can tell you that scope of work is going to be like, yeah, what are the, what are the ground rules for residents here? You know, how would you deal with removing somebody who's not following those ground rules? It's all of the, the questions you've raised. So, I think that, you know, that, that could be a resource and just kind of making sure we're on the, the same page about what this means.
Yeah, I mean, I think a next step would be, if, as long as the County Commission is, again, willing to explore this concept, we would work as staff and develop a more formal proposal that the full County Commission could look at and decide. We just wanted to see if. We just wanted to see if there's some openness to this arrangement and in some ways, this one project provides almost a preview or a model of what we would be doing as, as part of a joint office of really leveraging our strength, you know, where we can get land and infrastructure and things ready, but we need some help on the, on the human side of this, given the county's strength in public and behavioral health. So this would just be a microcosm of that and kind of demonstrating some, hopefully some success. Yeah.
So we'll nod and yes to that, whatever it is at this point, we'll get more clear.
Okay.
Can I just, can I just suggest, as Nick, so as you explore, you know, from the county's end, what it would look like for us to have the, the capacity to be able to, you know, manage the operation? You know, I heard one, I heard two different models put out. One would be a staff, you know, a county staff model and another would be if, what if we could find a nonprofit who wanted to act in this, you know, coordinator?
We're a for-profit company, why do we have to be nonprofit? Sorry, I'm throwing out ideas.
And I think the latter is more what, what we had in mind in terms of, of finding a nonprofit, a service, finding a service provider organization, be it for-profit or nonprofit, but a, a group that would, that would operate, you know, and, you know, be in charge of kind of, yeah, making a proposal, what are the rules, what, you know, what are all the, what are the needs, what's the budget of this site, how would you, you know, employ people who live there to, to help steward the site? And that it would just be county staff overseeing that, you know, that, that service provider and making sure that they have kind of what they need. So I think that was, that was our, yeah, okay, good.
I'm open to whatever structure, I just want us to be mindful of the weather, right? I mean, this is, I'm, I want us to be mindful of the conditions outside that we're running up against. I know everybody is, but, and I know everybody feels the urgency and I appreciate that there's a lot of gravity to this request, but it's, we, we don't have control over the weather.
And I'm hoping that this can be, you know, as you've mentioned, Chair DeBon, like, the problem with right now, you know, our inability to say, no, you can't camp here, we can't say that within, without, you know, in the same sentence being able to say, but you can camp over here. And so this would be a first step at least to providing a space where we can say, you know what, like this is not a safe place for you to be, here's a place where you can go. And, you know, if you're willing to follow these basic rules, you're not harming yourself, you're not harming others, you're not harming property, that you can stay here. And, you know, that is something we are sorely lacking right now.
So, sounds like you're open to consideration, thank you for that. Am I right on that?
Well, I mean, it has to be, it's going to be very open, public, serious business, so let's work together on that. I mean, that's, so think about, I mean, part of this is the city is, yeah, we've already talked about it all, we'll get there. I was just going to rehash the whole thing, but let's not.
I mean, I do just want, I, I did just want to go back to the navigation center concept and, and so was the request there, you know, allocate some of those ARPA managed camp funds that we were talking about or is that an additional request? And if so, then we will get, somebody will, somebody will send us a number.
It'll probably be a little bit of both. I think it's maybe leveraging the existing ARPA funds, we, we don't know what the gap yet. And I think we're starting with, we're keeping our options open, purchase or lease. So we just need more, we need to give you some on-the-ground information about what that might look like. And because it's a real estate deal, I think we also want to, that might be something that would be covered under kind of exec session, et cetera. So I will need to work with Nick about how to make sure that you get that information and get more details, but that also that we're not jeopardizing a potential real estate transaction and what that would look like. So it's a little more sensitive when we talk about purchasing a property and what that would look like, but. So we'll look forward to more clarity on the requests.
Okay, have we gone through everything for today? Well, it's great to see everybody in person, it's been a great go around here.
All worked out. Thank you.
We'll see if we had some good participation, people watching us, we could have been a lot of people watching, too, we don't even know, so.
Yeah, I'll be interested to know. I know, I know I got some questions from the press, which I'll get back, so I'm sure you will, too.
Yeah.
So there's, yeah, this is, this could be just a fundamentally important turning corner today, so, and how our community moves forward and, and really finding the right strategies for moving through this issue for our communities. So thank you.
Hey.
So we continue to work together. So are we going to adjourn this meeting?
Looks like it.
Arb's not here.
Move for adjournment.
I'll know my name, I'll move to adjourn.
You adjourn, there we go.
Thank you, everyone.